At this time is our citizens forum. This is where anyone from the public can come up and speak on something. Any topic not on today's agenda, please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
Yes, my name is Todd Eland and I live at 349 Sunset Drive. And I also own the Wendy's Restaurants here in Salina. And I'm gonna, I'm conscious of your time, I'll be very brief, I'm gonna leave a little material with you. We've got a situation out on Riffle Drive in the new area with construction and changes in traffic. My concern and the other business owners concerned in the neighborhood is that Riffle Drive intersects with Schilling. And we're gonna change that, and we made this decision some time back, the city did change that where you can only turn right when you leave off Riffle Drive and you cannot turn left to go to the interstate or towards Tony's Pizza. It really restricts access of our business. We had a taste of this when the road construction was in full progress, what limited access does to your businesses. On an average, from talking to the other business owners, we were down in traffic about 28 percent. If that's the case with the final product, I promise you that Wendy's will close. There's other businesses in that neighborhood, Popeyes, Taco Bueno, million dollar facilities that are closed, no longer paying sales tax to the city of Salina. The other thing I'd bring to your point real quick, if you just jump up one off-ramp to the Magnolia exit, you'll have an intersection there similar to Riffle Drive. There's fast food restaurants there, there's a grocery store, there's multiple retail outlets, and yet they have free access. If you leave, say, Sutherland's parking lot and you want to get on the interstate, you can turn left and jump right on the interstate. If you leave Riffle Drive and you want to go to the interstate, you're gonna have to back down Riffle Drive, go to Tractor Supply, get on Knight Street, and circle back around and get onto Schilling Road and then access the interstate. So you'll essentially be making a big loop. Just a couple of other quick considerations I'd give to this. I think when the decision was made, and I couldn't get it completely sorted out, it was the police department or the engineering department, but our economy was pretty robust. This decision was made a couple of years ago. Also, one of our major employers, Boeing, was going full steam. We've since lost or are losing them. And I don't know that it's the right time to shut down that kind of access for the people who are doing business in that area. And what I also appreciate about you city commissioners is that you always spend time studying problems and looking at it before you pull the trigger. So at the very least, I'd ask that we postpone this decision and study it and try to make what's the best decision. Number one, for the safety of the public and the traffic, and number two, for the businesses in the area.
For the benefit of me and you, if I could address this just a little bit with the deputy manager, where are we on that? Is that a done deal? Has that...
I'd be happy to answer the question. I'm not sure that it's necessarily my department, but the contract has let, the construction's underway.
So it is too late to rethink that intersection?
Well, commissioners, first of all, I want to make a clarification. It's my understanding, and I think your engineering division can correct me if I'm wrong, that during the time during construction in which there was limited access there, that that limited the access, eliminated even the left-in from Schilling onto Riffle. The design for the permanent median improvement there would allow left-in and left-out, so it allows full ability to get into Riffle. What it limits is your ability to leave from Riffle on Schilling, so it's the leaving, not the entering. So that's a little bit of difference between what was in place for the construction and what would be in place for the actual project when it's finished. Now, we're still trying to figure out, if we do that, how do we try to limit that traffic situation? I think we have a plan, that's a good plan, but how do we not create an intermediate problem for sure and limit traffic so much into Riffle during construction time that it really creates an economic hazard there? And I think we do have a pretty good plan for that, but ultimately, left-in, left-out in the current design, from Schilling to Riffle would be allowed, so you have full access in, you just have limited access out. With regards to the timeline, though, we are under contract. The contractor has a certain time to finish the project with the designs that are approved by, I mean, the city's design and all the folks that are involved. So in essence, you would have to have some type of a redesign in there. So what that would entail would be, potentially, you could affect your timeline and have to add days to the project. I don't know that for sure right now, but potentially, just so you're aware, that could happen. You could very well, well, you probably would add some cost in engineering to re-engineer that, so there's a little bit of cost there. So there could be those cost aspects, but as far as, I mean, that work has not been done yet, although that would be coming up pretty quickly as soon as the weather breaks. So I would never say you simply couldn't do anything, but those are sort of the things that would have to be thought about at that time. If you'd like, we could go back and have the engineering folks put together. It was an engineering decision primarily based on the traffic history and general design principles that the consulting engineer who actually designed the project put together, but we could go back and revisit that if that would be something that you'd like us to do.
Well, without putting you on the spot, what is the difference between that intersection and the intersection on Magnolia that he was speaking about?
Okay, the intersection, okay, he's talking about, I think, the traffic on Magnolia where you access the State Plaza to the south and the Dillons to the north. In all honesty, I'd have to see the actual, I'd have to see the geometrics, which means the distances from, say, the bridge and from the east as well, from that intersection, and also the traffic information. Visually, it looks very, very similar, but there could very well be some significant traffic differences there. I don't have the data, so it'd be hard for me to talk about that, but we could certainly compare and contrast.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'll leave this with the clerk.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. Any others? If not, we will move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the month of February 2010 as Black History Month in the city of Salina. Erin Davis will read the proclamation.
Thank you, commissioners and Mayor Larson, for allowing me the honor of reading this proclamation. Whereas, Black History Month is an opportunity for all Americans to honor the rich cultural heritage and legacy of people of African descent and pay tribute to them and the community organizations that contribute to the social, cultural, economic, and political life of Salina. And whereas, the citizens of Salina have been in the forefront of efforts to establish a caring, compassionate society based on the inherent dignity of all its members by taking a leadership role aimed at eliminating all forms of discrimination and disadvantage, and by recognizing that a fundamental strength of our community is based on the diversity among us. Now therefore, I am Lucy Larson, Mayor of the city of Salina, to hereby proclaim the month of February 2010, Black History Month, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in celebrating the diversity and character of our community and highlight the importance of sharing our culture, customs, and traditions with those around us. And witness whereof, I have hereby to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, be affixed this day, February 1st, 2010.
Are there any activities or events being planned for the month?
Yes. On February 6th, the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet at the Bicentennial Center. The keynote speaker is Petrie Hawkins Bird from the Judge Judy Television Show, and the reception and autographs and pictures from 4:30 to 6:15 p.m. The program begins at 6:30 p.m., and tickets are $35 for adults and $15 for youth. There are Black History displays will be at the Salina-Slayne County Building on the second floor entrance, Salina Post Office, and at the NAACP Freedom Fund banquet. On February 20th, 9 a.m., George Washington Carver Celebration in Minneapolis, Kansas. The program will begin at the Ottawa County Museum with a film about Dr. Carver and a display. Gospel singers will perform at the Presbyterian Church. There will be others on the program, and lunch will be served at 12 p.m. USD 305. Teachers from each school will decide on what they will do. On February 28th, Quail United Methodist Church will have a soul food dinner beginning at 2:00 p.m. to 3:15 p.m. The program begins at 3:30 p.m., and it is about Negro spirituals. The theme is a journey through time. And Brown Mackey College, professors will have individual lessons and/or discussions in their classes as they deem fit and appropriate.
So you have lots going on?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much, I have a signed proclamation for you.
Item 4.2, the month of February 2010 as National Ambux Month in the city of Salina. Lori Blake will read the proclamation.
Thank you, commissioners, and my fellow Ambux sisters, Mayor Lucy Larson and Commissioner Samantha Angel. It is my joy as president of the New Network Ambux to read this proclamation. Whereas, Ambux is dedicated to creating mobility and independence for people with disabilities, and whereas, the recognition of Ambux as an organization making an important difference in the communities across the United States as a noteworthy event. And whereas, the city of Salina is proud to boast three chapters of Ambux, the Salina A.M. Breakfast Bandits, New Network, and Red Baron. And whereas, the New Network chapter of Ambux is now celebrating 18 years of service, the Salina A.M. chapter is celebrating 51 years of service, and Red Baron chapter is now celebrating 29 years of service. And whereas, the city of Salina is also proud to be home of the Ambux past national president, Tom Lattis, and current District 5D Governor Karen Vidrickson. And whereas, each of the chapters have various community projects in which they participate, such as funding and building fully accessible playgrounds in public parks and schools, financial assistance to children and adults with disabilities, building ramps to individuals' homes, providing therapeutic anthrax for children, and funding scholarships for students in physical therapy, occupational therapy, and speech and language pathology degree programs. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the city of Salina and Kansas hereby proclaim the month of February 2010 as National Ambux Month. In the city of Salina, and urge all citizens to become more aware of the altruistic service and wholesome upbuilding of communities they render. Adopted this first day of February 2010 by the Board of Commissioners of the city of Salina, Kansas.
And I know that you have some activities and events planned this month?
We do. We will be participating in the National Day of Service on February the 20th by participating in the Special Olympics Polar Plunge. We have three of our members who will be jumping out at Webster Conference Center to support the activities of Special Olympics, as well as helping in their concession stands to help them raise money for the athletes here in Salina.
Okay, thank you very much. Didn't mean to diss the deputy manager because he is also an Ambux, but anyway, have a smile.
Yeah.
We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 21st, 2010. Item 6.2, approve the minutes of January 25th, 2010. Item 6.3, resolution number 10-6701, appointing members to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Disciplining Advisory Board, and Tree Advisory Board.
Does a commissioner wish to have anything pulled from the consent agenda? If not, I'll ask for action.
Will we approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 4-0. We have no development business, so we will move on to administration.
Item 8.1, first reading ordinance number 10-10,532, authorizing a contract with Mid-Kansas Underground for fire protection on property located outside the city limits.
Mayor and commissioners, thank you. Each year, we renew contracts with owners of property that are outside the city limits in order to extend fire protection from the city fire department to those properties. This property has been protected by a number of years. This change represents simply a change in ownership for the property and brings the contract up to date. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Franz? I just had one quick one. Have we ever had any other situations like this besides this one?
Yes, they come up periodically. Typically, as I said, we renew these contracts at the end of every year, and this one has just changed ownership.
Oh, okay, okay, all right. Thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. If not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move. We pass ordinance number 10-10,532 on first reading.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance number 10-10,532 on first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.2, resolution number 10-6702, adopting the 2010-2014 capital improvement program and authorize the 2010 sub-CIP.
Mr. Franz again.
Once again. We have, previous study sessions discussed this program in some detail, and then again, last week, discussed the airport project. There are a few minor changes to the plan as presented. Among those, probably the most significant, is the addition of the airport utilities project that we discussed last week that is now scheduled for a 2010 date, and as noted, will result in a potential rate change of about 3 percent, we believe, first required in 2012. Other more minor changes, we've assigned the tuck pointing waterproofing of the Hillcrest mausoleum to the care fund for the mausoleum. That will deplete that fund, but will provide for much-needed major maintenance at the facility without placing a demand on the general fund. We've shifted the Smoky Hill Master Plan, which was originally slated for 2010, but we initiated that in late 2009, so that has changed some of the planning sub-CIP. We've incorporated the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee's recommendation into this plan, and you had approved that section of the plan separately in December. We've incorporated $100,000 of the Smoky Hill River Master Plan into the Park Improvement CIP. Again, that will deplete that fund, but will provide, again, relief to the general fund. We've added 2009 carryover projects, that is, projects that they did not complete last year that are going to be carried into the 2010 plan. Those specifically were a significant portion of some manhole rehabilitation and the SCADA projects for the water and wastewater plants. And then we finally, we added the $200,000 operating capital portion of the plan for the Bicentennial Center that was approved as a part of the business plan for the Bicentennial Just a note, you had previously approved Vehicles and Equipment Program, but the remainder of the sub-CIP needs approval at this time also. I think I'll leave it at that and open it up for questions from you if you have any questions.
No, thank you. I'll open it up for public comment. Seeing that there is none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, move. We pass resolution number 10-6702, which adopts the 2010-2014 capital improvement program budget.
Second.
Do we need to, do we need to also authorize the 2010 sub, or is that a separate motion?
Yeah, it's fine to combine that motion.
Okay.
Resolution number 10-6702 would also authorize the 2010 sub-CIP.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number 10-6702, adopting the 2010-2014 CIP and authorize the 2010 sub-CIP. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 8.3, first reading ordinance number 07-10,402, amending Chapter 33, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to junk and junk dealers.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and commissioners. This is a comprehensive rewrite of an existing code section which is found in Chapter 33 of the Salina Code. And the origin for this rewrite started in 2007 when the city commission was adopting its first strategic plan and shared vision statement. And at that time, the subject of beautifying major entryways into the community was discussed, and West State Street was an issue at the time, the appearance of that as an entryway into the city. And so at that time, the city commission passed a 90-day moratorium on any new or expanded junkyards to allow review of the current licensing and zoning requirements. And so the first thing that was concluded was that we didn't have good definitions in our zoning ordinance, because if someone came in and asked if they could do car crushing in a certain district, we wouldn't be able to answer the question because it wasn't defined or listed. So there was a set of definitions added to the zoning ordinance that was approved by the city commission in May of 2007. Then in September of 2007, a set of amendments was approved that established development standards, but these only applied to new locations or expansions, but it did not apply to existing operations. That, again, was approved in September of '07, and then in ordinance that would deal just with the annual licensing requirements for existing junkyards and salvage yards. The city commission voted to refer this item back to staff for additional study and to get input from the existing salvage yard operators. Shortly thereafter, there was a study session, and at that study session, there was discussion about the concept of developing compliance agreements with the existing operators. That would be a middle ground, somewhere between complete grandfathering of what was there and having them strictly comply with the new proposed standards. And so the time spent between then and now has been working with each of the existing operators on their unique situations, developing compliance agreements, meeting with them on-site, and making adjustments to the text of the ordinance in response to some of their concerns. And we've kind of given you a summary there of the existing operations. Mike Fuller, who was operating the Fuller's Yard on East Pacific, left the business. His father came out of retirement, but is not sure he wants to carry on. Right now, it's on hiatus and may shut down permanently. However, there's no outstanding compliance issues on that site, even if they did want to restart. So they, they're not sure whether they're going to get back into the operation. At Salina Iron and Metal, they're operating under provisional license. We've been working with them for some additional screening along Fifth Street, making sure items along Fifth are moved behind the fence. There's a vacant building that's on their site that needs to be securely enclosed on all sides, and then the fence along Elm Street, we're working on a plan to extend that a little farther to the northeast. We've also had some discussions with them about possibly vacating the alley parallel to Fifth Street and Pine Street to the west. There was an alley vacation action that was initiated previously, and that was blocked by one owner, but that owner no longer owns the property, so that's a possibility. In the case of Mr. Rennick on Cherry Street, we've been working with him to try to pin down his boundaries on the south and east, and he's had some discussions with us about having a new gated entrance off of Walnut Street on the east, and also about possibly vacating Cherry Street as a public street, which would eliminate some of the concerns about fencing and screening if that's no longer a public street. With BFR Metals, they have a conditional use permit that was reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. When they reviewed that, they applied the new standards that are in the ordinance that's before you today. That means eight-foot screening instead of six, all-weather access road, an approved site plan that shows where everything is. We've been working with them on some dead landscaping along State Street and their gate on State Street that they've been having trouble with keeping it in place. In September, we met with the four operators at the same time. We went through this draft, section by section. They had some additional possible modifications they said they'd like to see. Those were made and given to them, and at the study session held in November, they attended and indicated that they didn't have any concerns about the draft with those revisions. And just to summarize some of those changes, the first draft, I guess I came up with the idea of having a team approach where you might have five or six city staff members from different departments doing an inspection at one time. That seemed a little bit overwhelming to the operators, so the neighborhood services supervisor will coordinate that, and then if an issue is identified, get consultation with the affected department. There was a proposal to have the police department do background checks if a license was transferred. That was deleted. We had a lot of discussion about whether eight-foot gates were practical and worked, and so the compromise language was that for gates, the operators can use four-foot panels, but they have to be installed to a height of five feet and have some sort of screening, whether it's a mesh fiber or what that might be, but the eight-foot gates, in their mind, were not practical because of weight and difficulty moving them. And so that was a compromise. Instead of prescribing gravel or asphalt millings, it allows the fire marshal to determine whether the roads that are inside the yard are sufficient to support a fire truck. And then there was one section that said that operators had to make their yard available for inspection at any time, and that was deleted entirely. So that's kind of a summary of changes that were made. This is coming back before you for first reading consideration, and you could approve that as drafted before you, or you could approve it with any amendments or additions or modifications you'd like to see made. You could refer this back to staff for additional study, or you could decline to approve the amended ordinance. We think that these changes are consistent with your strategic goal of modifying existing ordinances to accommodate growth and development objectives, and we would recommend alternative one or two. This draft and this report was sent to all four of the operators, and they've had several opportunities to review the drafts, and the follow-up items would be to complete the items that need to be addressed in the compliance agreements. Since this recommends having a single license instead of seven different categories, we would need to develop a new license application and then establish one fee instead of the seven fees that we have now. With that, I'd be open to any questions.
Mr. Andrew, how does the mobile home, how does the mobile home park or the mobile home dealership or whatever it is, how does the whole salvage?
Yeah, I think.
How does it tie into all of this?
Mobile home salvage? Well, we have a situation that I know comes and goes on North Knight Street where there's an operator there who is a dealer, and it would be the same situation as if you were a licensed car dealer. You can't have cars that you are salvaging or... You can't have cars that you are salvaging or salvaging parts out of as part of your car dealership. You'd have to be a licensed salvage yard, and they have an equal provision in the state to be a licensed manufactured home dealer. And the property on North Ninth does not have a salvage yard license for manufactured homes, and so the only thing they can have for display there are units that are available for sale, but not for salvage.
So why do they have those other ones there?
Well, they shouldn't. They do come and go, and we've had some success.
Are we enforcing, are we enforcing that? Is that what you're saying? We try to enforce that?
We try to enforce it, but we had it cleaned once, and new units came back, and we're not sure where they have come from.
Okay.
But that, that happened once before when ARC out of Denver bought Joe Cronenberg's mobile home parks and deemed a lot of those units unfit, and they were all hauled out, and some of them ended up on North Ninth Street, and those were gotten rid of, but now new ones seem to have come back.
Okay.
But it is, it is an ongoing thing, and one of the leverages that we have is that the operator there needs to have their dealer's license signed off on by us locally, and so the last time the operator was told by me that I wouldn't sign his license for the state until he got rid of the salvage units that worked before, and hopefully will continue working.
Is there a timeline on something like that?
Well, if he doesn't want to get shut down by the state for not having a license, that's usually the motivation.
What, and what is that timeline? What, how much time does that take?
Well, if he's operating there without his license, then probably within 30 days, he's going to get a letter from the state.
And that renews every year?
It doesn't seem to have come in every year. It seems like more every two years, but that's generally how it's been addressed.
Dean, would it make sense that given the number of times that we've had to, in essence, try to work with him and give him a timeline, that if it comes back, we can presume that the warnings probably aren't effective, and at that point, look at citations?
That was my question behind my question.
Yeah.
My thought behind my question.
We could, at any time, we could issue him notices or citations. Just from my experience, the part, the time when it has his greatest attention is when he's trying to renew his state license, but at any time, even now, we could issue him a notice and give him a certain amount of time to do that. He's always managed to get them moved before he's referred to municipal court, but that is a possibility also.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions of staff?
Regarding Article, the Article 3 amendment, I would like to thank staff for taking the time to go back through this and spend some time on it. I know when this was initially brought up, it kind of drew the angst of several junk dealers, and by the time, you know, we sat down with them, they were all in agreement that this was an okay thing, so I appreciate that.
They must be okay with it they're not here.
From my vantage point, I think they deserve some recognition as well. They were very receptive.
It was a 50/50.
Yes, I think they certainly met us halfway, and they understood what we were trying to get at, and we understood how they ran their businesses.
Their business.
So it could be practical.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Andrew. I'll open it up to public comment. If there is none, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I'd move we approve ordinance number 07-0, 10,402.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve on first reading ordinance number 10-10,402, amending Chapter 33, Article 3 of the Salina Code pertaining to junk and junk dealers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0.
Mayor, I'd move we recess into executive session for 25 minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege for the reason the public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and reconvene at this room at 5:03 p.m.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes 4-0. Do you anticipate any action?
We do not.
We are in executive session.